We will call our meeting to order at nine o'clock. Roll call please.
Bobbit.
Here.
Ronk.
Here.
Hess.
Here.
We do have a quorum. Uh, Pat, would you lead us in further this morning?
Yes. If you bow your heads please. Dear heavenly father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all the many blessings. We ask that you help guide and guard and direct us as we go through our agenda today. Help us make the right decision that'll be meet your approval. And, and also be the best for the, for the citizens of this county. We ask that you help keep all of our, all of our employees safe as they go through this day and this week. We ask that you, uh, you help the, the people that are, that are traveling through our county to get through safely to where they're, to where they're going and then back to home. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Max, would you lead us in further please?
Yes, I will. Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four, Mindy.
Uh, I will acknowledge that we are in compliance with open meeting act.
Okay, thank you. Consider, um, an, an act on approval of the January sixteenth twenty eighteen regular minutes and January twenty second twenty eighteen. So we'll take the January sixteenth first.
Move to approve January sixteenth.
I will second that. Ronk motion. Bobbit seconded to approve the January sixteenth minutes. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
Motion carried. All ayes. Uh, January twenty second meeting. We have a motion to approve those.
I'm finished reading.
Oh, sorry about that.
That's okay. I make a motion to approve the January twenty second meeting minutes.
I will second that. Hess moved. Bobbit seconded to approve the January twenty second, twenty eighteen minutes as a, has presented. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Abstained.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay.
To form an extension. Item six. Comments from the public on the below agenda items. Does anybody have any comments to make? Um, item seven A, transfer of appropriations. We have one transfer of appropriation. It is for District Two from the county highlight MNO forty thousand dollars to District Two capital outlay forty thousand dollars. Do we have a motion to?
Move to approve.
Second.
Ronk moved. Hess seconded to approve the transfer of appropriation as presented. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
Yes. Motion, uh, all ayes. Motion carried unanimously. Let's see, Cindy, this is a different form.
Yeah.
So you sign here and there and then?
Then the reason.
The reason, okay.
Cause I didn't have enough money anymore.
Yeah.
Cause there wasn't enough money to cover what I bought.
Okay, do, do we sign underneath you? Or no, you're just signing as a department head?
I think so. We used to do that, Max, but do we, but since we've got, but since we've got?
We sign here.
Yes, since we've got individual accounts, we won't do that anymore. Cause the, the new beta account numbers are different. So just here.
Yeah, I know. I don't, I have not got this new.
Yeah.
Account number.
Which, which I still am willing, if you want, I would be glad to come, you know, or do a little training deal or whatever. Cause I'm getting it.
I still think we need that.
Okay, okay. I'll work on that.
Get our E eight or, you know.
Yeah.
And they're, they're, they work with it more than we do.
Right, right.
Probably getting it too.
Yeah. And I'll, actually I'll create a new amended list, make sure it's all up to date. And I'll actually try to do that this week and get it out to you.
Okay.
And I did get the budget.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
I signed it.
Oh, thank you. Uh, yes, I like how it's very clean.
Well, I was, there is a little nick on the side and I've told Desi and she's going to contact them. So you may want to look at it after the meeting. Just cause I noticed it after they left.
Oh, okay.
So I don't know if it happened.
I thought we'd have, we'll talk about it later.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Um, transfer of appropriations, OSA and I four forty controlled substance, sheriff's forfeitures.
And that's what this is. And what the deal is, is when we set up the new chart of accounts on controlled substance. Well, it, cause it works different in the treasurer's office than it does in the clerk's office. Cause we have them split out. We have one set up for DA controlled service, uh, controlled substance and sheriff's office controlled substance. But that puts them all under kind of like the same fund, that seventy three thirty five. Well, that doesn't work for Penny because hers are all by just that group of numbers. So we got ahold of Sherry Shefferdine, Penny and Sherry and all work together. There's a, an account, the twelve twenty five is sheriff's forfeitures. So we're taking, and there's been no encumbrances on the sheriff's portion. So there's not any warrants or anything that are so.
No, damn it.
Right. So we're just transferring the current balance, which was the hundred percent movement of the sheriff's controlled substance into share, is now will be called sheriff's forfeiture.
Okay.
And under it, and under twelve twenty five rather than that seventy three.
Okay.
And these are the supporting documents showing what's in the account.
Okay.
Alrighty, so.
And that's my story and I'm sticking to it.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to approve that?
I, I shall move.
I'll second that.
Hess moved. Ronk seconded to approve the form OSA and I form two forty controlled substance to the sheriff, to sheriff's forfeiture to be in compliance with our new beta accounting system numbering system. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carried unanimously.
I move to, oh, okay. Yeah, I, yeah, I move to approve, uh, purchase orders and travel claims.
Second.
Ronk motion. Hess seconded to approve the payment of purchase orders and travel claims as presented. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carried unanimously. If you want to call Alex and have her come pick those up.
Okay.
Ready to be picked up. And there's not any blankets.
No blankets. Hi, you took, or the, uh, POs are ready to pick up. Thank you. Bye.
On blankets, Cindy.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Donna, I guess didn't get a copy of the shale bullets. I think we signed them last week.
Oh, okay.
Uh, she asked me about them this morning.
Okay, so she needs copies of those. Okay. Can I just email them or fax them?
Yes. Well, whichever. I can get a copy and take back.
Oh, okay, okay.
Be fine.
Okay.
Aye.
Morning.
Morning. We can do that.
Yeah. I, I don't know evidently where we left last time.
Will you have Alex get copies of the blanket POs for the shell contracts for District One?
Yes, for.
So Max is gonna take, be Doug and?
And sister.
Okay. Oh, Ashley. Doug and Ashley.
Yeah, thank you, Ashley.
Doug Seeley and Ashley Baker. He just needs copies of the PO, the blanket POs on those that were approved last week. Thank you.
Um, no blankets. Item B, bid thirty one twenty seventeen for D one and D two, purchase of one or more new or used single hopper box truck, duck trailers with trade-in of one or more, accept or reject. Max, did you have an opportunity to review yours?
I did look at it and stuff and I did not have an opportunity to call, uh, Stephen and talk to him about the interest question that I had.
Okay.
But, uh, I do believe I'm gonna purchase two trailers. I'll trade off my two older trailers. Uh, accepting, uh, Southwest Trailers bid. They're giving me more for trade-ins than, than the other people. How about you?
Um, I was, I called and talked to that Adam. I had some, I wanted to make sure on clarification. I got confused on their pictures. But they will have the sheeting. They're fully enclosed.
Fully enclosed.
The picture they sent had them just on the side, the none on the front and rear. And they are on the front and the rear. And they said they do have to order them. So if you want your ladders on the front, you can have them on the front. If you want them on the rear, you can have them on the rear. So you can do online on the front.
Front, front's better.
So, yeah, I think so too. I think my bid erroneously asked for them on the rear.
Oh, really?
And, but with them being built, you can do them either way. But we do want ours on the front as well.
I have them both. I have a trailer with it on the rear.
I've got, had them both ways. They like it better on the front.
Yeah.
Cause you can, when hooking and unhooking and tarping and different things, so.
Yeah, and your electric motor on your toilet and stuff is at the front.
Right. And he said he had one in stock, but it did not have the, uh, electric, uh, mo, uh, mowers on it. Max, those were sent to Donna this morning.
They were? Thank you. Thank you.
So for some reason, I thought that was the bid right there.
Uh, that's, uh, that's fine. That being said, if we have to call and order them, I, I may turn off accepting mine until next week.
Okay. He said, yeah, he would not order them until?
He found out.
He found out.
Okay. Well, I don't want to hold you up.
So, well, I think, uh, yes, I was trying to find that exact bid.
What was, what's, what's the?
Okay, cause I, I.
Which one do you want?
I, I want the Southwest trailer bid. I'm sorry. I must've left it on my desk.
Now, it's calling.
This morning. Picked up the other ones, but I don't have that.
It's six five point eight overall, but when it had a discount, there was one of mine that is six point two five or something like that interest.
Oh, was it?
And I just was kind of.
Well, it's pretty high interest anyway.
It is. It is. I wanted to ask Stephen whether it would be possible to, uh, accept their deal, but ask that dealership to go to Shattuck Bank or another bank and ask for a better rate of interest. Now, I don't know. They'll probably have to go out and rebid it because you're asking them to change financing.
Cause our, our bid was for, uh, purchase of one or more new or used single hopper trailer with trade-in of one or more used single hopper bottom trailer and bid requested with option to finance equipment. So that is what you probably need to ask for clarification on that. So with that said, um, on mine, I would, uh, I would like to go ahead today and the, it is good for, I think, I believe thirty days. So I think it's, uh, legal to accept it and then come back. And we can piggy, we've been able to piggyback off of bids before. So at this time.
We're, we're not really piggybacking if you're.
No, you're right. No, the bid's still, uh, the bid, the bid's still good in place and delivery be three five. With that said, I would like to, um, move that to accept the, uh, bid from Southwest Trailers for District Two for item one, two, and three. Uh, with trade-ins, the purchase price was twenty seven nine fifty. Uh, allowance on the trade-in was twenty, uh, twenty?
Twenty one, so.
Twenty two, twenty, I think minus twenty two hundred. Brings it down to a net of five thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars for each trailer. So all three of those, make sure that you stipulate that that is, um, fully enclosed with sheets on the front and rear with front ladders on that. Um, and I will be paying, uh, cash for those. I will not, I will not, I decline the financing on that. So we'll do three trade-ins.
Okay.
I'm second on that.
I am second that.
Okay. Bobbit moved. Hess seconded to accept the bid from Southwest Trailers on District Two, items one, two, and three with the trade-in values and reject the financing. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carried unanimously. And then to put that on, um, for next week.
Next week.
So if Max can, uh, continue to review his, but you can send an award letter online.
Okay.
On that. Um, item F, bid thirty two twenty seventeen for the Grant County Health Department, purchase of a thirty KW generator with amp transfer switches specified in bid packet, accept or reject. At this time, we will ask the health department for their input on what they have found out.
It's my understanding that Faith, um, has the lowest bid, correct?
Yes.
And, um, it, we would like to accept, um, if you also feel that that is the best. We have worked with them in the past and they also have, um, people that, um, are certified in working on generators. If we do happen to have issues, so we would like to accept if that is.
Well, I think there was an option on that for a five-year warranty. Uh, do you want to accept that?
Yes.
Five-year, I think that was an option.
Yes, please.
Okay. But we do double check on that just to make sure that we get that correct.
Are you also accepting the, uh, automatic, the monitoring?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes. And then that's a renew. I think the monitoring is one year and then you have to renew it every year. Is that?
Yeah.
You can hear Faith.
Not supposed to be a monthly monitoring is my understanding.
Yeah.
Okay, that's a ten, ten-year warranty.
Ten-year extended.
Ten-year warranty.
That's even better.
Yeah, that's even better. I couldn't remember, but I.
Oh, no, we don't want that.
We don't want five.
No, we, yeah, we just want five.
Golly.
Alrighty. Uh, does anybody like to make a?
I, I move to accept the bid from Faith Electric with, for the generator at sixteen thousand one twenty-eight. Is it ninety-five?
Seventy-five.
For seventy-five?
Yeah.
Okay. With the ten-year extended warranty with the one year of monitoring.
Monthly monitoring.
Monitor leak.
Yeah, one year. Yeah. Yes.
So, yeah, that's my motion.
Okay.
I will second that motion.
Okay. Ronk moved. Hess seconded to accept the bid from Faith Electric as the lowest and best bid. The price is sixteen thousand one twenty-eight seventy-five, which also includes a ten-year extended warranty and has the one-year monitoring that can be renewed annually. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. We will send them an award letter on that and then you can contact them, make contact for them. With that, the one question that has been brought up is, we realize that you do need a generator and especially because of your vaccines and stuff.
Yes.
Um, with that, I'm assuming that means because you will have vaccines, that means you're gonna have a nurse here?
There will be a nurse here. And any, I mean, I know that there have been lots of rumors about not having a nurse here. We will have a nurse here.
Okay, great.
It will be a nurse assigned to this site.
Okay.
Eight to five, Monday through Friday.
Okay, great. Cause we would work with you if we needed to, to make that.
That is not an issue at all. Um, at this moment, um, I don't know who that nurse will be.
Okay.
And I will let you know that as soon as I can tell you that.
Okay.
Um, and then also I will come back, either that or send you all a letter, an email and kind of give you an update like I did last time. Kind of where we stand. Would that help?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very much, yes.
So, um, I will continue to do that as I find things out. Um, March, you know, after March second, we'll kind of see, start seeing the dust settle to see how things will be. Um, even though we'll have someone assigned here, um, they may go out and do public types of things. So there may not be somebody in the office all the time as far as a nurse, but that'll be scheduled. So they may go out to schools or they may do, um, things with the public like, uh, we've done chronic disease discussions about hypertension or diabetes, those types of things. But that will be scheduled and there'll be a note on the door when, you know, if that's going to occur.
Is there options to have a county nurse come like to our district shops every, like maybe once a year and administer the flu shots at our shops for our employees?
What ins, what insurance do you all?
We are with Blue Cross Blue Shield. It's our own health insurance, O P E H N W, and they pay a hundred percent for it.
Let me see. Um, they, I know that they're working on our system as far as billing.
Mm-hmm.
So Todd, if you will check, and it's Blue Cross and Blue Shield?
Yes, it's through O P E H N W. It's, uh, where we, we have our own, our own little plan within it. The Blue Cross is just our administrator of our plans, but we do pay a hundred percent, uh, for those types of things. Um, a lot of vaccines eaten in the morning shots. Uh, we thought maybe if you had like a little mini health fair in our district shops where they could choose, they want these vaccines that are included, maybe that they can be administered or something.
If we can, if we can, we will.
Okay.
Um, and part of it is our ability to bill.
I got you.
But, um, regardless, we can also talk about whose vaccines aren't that expensive and we can also pay for it. So, I mean, we can talk about some of those different things if we, if we can do that.
Okay.
That's something that we can discuss. But regardless, you know, we are available to come out if, if you all want, um, in your shops, I know you have to have so many safety trainings a year. So if you want a specific safety training that is related to health, we're happy to do that. If we can come out and do screenings as far as blood pressure screenings and discussion about just, you know, any health topic that you would like, we're happy to do that as well.
That would be great. Cause we have to do our blood pathogens, I think, annually and some different things. And we've done a dozen. But it would be great to have some, a new face with our health deal. That would be great. I would love to have you come do that.
Yes. Just kind of let us know whenever that time of year it is for you. Cause generally we do ours in January round and whenever you, when you do yours.
We have monthly meetings. So we can have it, the courthouse is quarterly. So we can do it when your, a slow time for you would be.
Okay. That would be great. That would be great.
Okay, awesome. I appreciate that very much. Alright, thank you, Phil. Thank you, Ronk.
Thank you, yeah.
Okay. Um, item G, Sheriff's Office and Courthouse renovations.
I know Scott wanted to visit a little bit. I just put that on there just because I know we've got things going on with that, so.
I just had a couple of questions. I guess there were some, you had made some suggestions that were a little bit different than the drawing that they had made up.
I did?
I think in the meeting.
Well, the board.
The board in general. Like some of the things are, are not quite correct on the drawing. Um, on the overhead doors on the south side.
We're doing locks in there.
Yes. Um, would bricks be possible? So that way it's kind of all matches.
We would have to get with them. They were gonna do, they, that was not in the original plan.
Correct, correct.
When they were here, we said that we wanted to add. So they're supposed to be doing some options for us.
Use the space for.
Yeah, we need to know what you're using the space for.
Oh, yes. What we would like to do is move all the, the pantry groceries that we have down in the basement.
Okay, that won't be, is it?
Right, that's why I thought he needed.
Yes, it's not gonna, it's not for evidence, no.
We thought it would, okay. We thought it was gonna be an evidence and so we should try to beef it up, so.
Correct. Correct. So, you know, and maybe move our, get our washer and dryer possibly up there instead of having to track everything, clear down in the basement and back up, so.
That, moving of the washer and dryer is the interior. I don't know that that'd be done at this time, but the, the wall deal is, we'll, we'll get with him and tell him that it's not gonna be.
Right. Sure. No, all I'm asking, all I'm asking for would be the wall enclosure. That's why I think bricks would be, just a brick would be fine instead of having to go with like a center block.
If we can find bricks that matches.
Sure, correct.
Yeah.
And also, I want to leave a doorway in there, like maybe just a five foot wide, like a regular doorway. So if I need to bring unloaded groceries, cases of groceries or a washer, dryer or something to get it in there. Cause going in our regular south door.
You just want a regular walk-in. You don't want an overhead room.
Yes. No, no, just a regular, just like maybe five foot wide so we can.
Do they make a five foot wide door?
If they do, that's what we'll.
I know they make forty-eight inches. That's four feet.
That's pretty standard.
But I don't know about a five foot. We'll, we'll check.
Okay.
Does it need to be a five foot?
I just want to make sure I can get bigger items through there easy, like a washer, dryer. Or maybe a, you know, a stand-up fridge if we do that, or a stand-up freezer. Since our wa, since our big walk-in freezer's already in here, so I'd like to get the rest of the, the grocery items upstairs. It would just be a lot more user-friendly.
Okay.
And I think it would help us with some space issue downstairs also. But so that doorway there and that's, so that was the only thing there.
Do you, do you have a preference where you want the door closed? Probably more on?
It can be.
West end?
It can, yes.
More on the west end?
Yeah. Yeah, it can actually be almost, you know, just to the, just to the east of the current door that's there, that current walk-in door. That'd be fine, right there on that end. And on the, the windows upstairs in the jail, I think it mentioned, man, I can't reach this right here.
You said it.
I had this little magnifying glass out.
It says, um.
I think we've got, I think this is our figure plan. What page is that?
A two oh three.
Did they ever get our initial plan?
Here it is. Um, I don't, we're, we're missing part of our plans. Have you ever emailed all that stuff to you?
No.
Okay. It says remove, are you trying to, this got up at the top?
Yeah.
Says remove aluminum storefront windows, ready window opening to receive new window, repair any damage to window opening caused by demo.
Okay, um, right above that where it says window air conditioner to be salvaged and reinstalled.
Oh, here it is.
Those air conditioners do not need to go back in. They, we haven't used them in years.
So how do you heat and cool up there?
It's with the geothermal.
Okay, so.
Yeah, anywhere there's a window unit in a window, it's just because we haven't had a, we haven't gotten somebody here to yank that out and, and plug the hole. So those.
Well, that, that's a, that'll be a better deal.
Yes.
It'll save us to have on the reinstallation and stuff, so, okay.
Yeah, we don't need those window units reinstalled. They can, they can go. And I just wanted to make sure that whoever was doing this understood that the windows up in the jail, just in the jail portion on the top.
Yeah, they're gonna be quite, quite expensive.
I don't want, I just want to make sure that it's not like our home windows where inmates can flip the switch and push them open.
These are, these are special windows.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
You know, we told them we didn't want to.
That way.
We didn't want, we didn't want a jail break.
Well, and, uh, and, yeah, we, I just want to make sure that, that my people are the only ones that will be able to get them open, have access to open them.
The upstairs, refresh my memory, but if I remember right, the nor, uh, the, the north and south, the, the jail cells don't actually go into those windows in that hallway. So they really don't have, but it would be the, more the ones that are on the.
Well, actually, no, actually all of them need to be. Because even though we have inmates that are trustees.
Trustees can have access.
They have access to it and they're just as human as the rest of us. And they get influenced sometimes by other inmates to,
No.
to threaten their trustee status.
Well, they, they maybe, I, I, I'm not so sure that the windows were not sealed windows that could not be opened.
That's.
I think they're, I think they're.
If that's the case, I'm okay with that. But we probably need one or two on each side in case there's a smoke issue that we would be able to open maybe with a special key or tool for ventilation. And I think those are really the only two things I wanted to make, um, have the clarification on, was the, the windows upstairs and then that, those south doors. Do you have any idea what their idea is on that fire escape? It's such a hard spot. You know what I mean?
They're gonna take that one off.
Well, they're putting a new one in.
I just didn't know if you had any idea what the?
He didn't, he did not.
A slide.
Well, it's gonna be one of the, you know, you see those plastic culverts we use, you know?
Yeah, a big slide too.
We're gonna have it where you can hook it on and then they just shoot down it. Would that work?
And that's also gonna work as a laundry chute.
Yeah. So, no. Uh, I, I don't know, but I know that your front steps coming into your building is, is going to be pretty massive uh, to meet the grade, uh, the, the seat, the concrete that's there and to make it where you have landings to meet ADA requirements. And it's gonna be pretty intense and pretty massive.
That way the grade's not too.
Right.
They can only go so many feet and they have to have a landing.
And they have to have a landing, yeah, certain grade. I know they're pretty massive, but, uh.
Were they gonna, on the door, are they gonna put like a push button if somebody wheels themselves up there?
We have to have, that's ADA. You have to have.
That's part of it. You have to have that.
You have to have that.
Good, okay.
So. So.
One other question. Now that we're addressing the, the ADA, once we, once somebody that's handicapped makes it, say they, they push the button, they make access into our lobby. If they need to get back into our booking area, like for visitation, we, we might need to widen that door or have a push button on that door. So you know what I mean?
We probably will not have a push button because that would be a security issue. If you're bringing someone in to book them, that you'll just have to open the door.
Well, we already have the access control.
Yeah.
But, yeah, a wider door would probably, probably have to happen.
A wider door possible.
Yeah.
Yes.
Maybe even a wider door on the bathrooms.
Let's go.
We generally, yeah, we generally, generally that's not for public use.
We might be inside.
Yeah, no public, yeah.
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's.
But we might have to have a, the only other. But we might have to have a, the only other.
We might be inside, yeah, no public, yeah, yeah, let's, yeah, let's, we're not really good, we're doing our outside is phase one, and then we're gonna see how much money we have left to start on phase two.
Sure. Right.
So, so, but, yeah, Scott, thank you for bringing that to our attention, and, um, I'll probably, Cindy, why don't you contact, uh, Jim, and tell him what we discussed, and have him call Scott to verify the windows, what the options, to verify the windows, so you can discuss maybe one on each side
Okay, that'd be great.
with a special lock, uh, to be able to vent or something.
Yes, to be able to vent, mhm, mhm.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
And I'll also check about getting the completed plans and then get it to you.
Yeah, he said they were gonna, I thought they were gonna email those or something.
Yeah, I have forgotten, yes.
Alright, that's all I had, thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Item H, notice to vendor oh one twenty eighteen Sheriff's Office and Courthouse renovation, is that a, oh, yeah, I know what that is, that's why we're here.
Yeah.
Say, wait a minute, so, did they get you the bid packet? They did not get you the bid packet, well, we probably, that's why we're having a special meeting today, because they want to do it today, so I assume we need to probably place a phone call to them.
Let's see, do you have their number, I need to.
See, I thought, do we need to call Kyler, or?
Do you need Randy? He's the CEO, Randy is.
I would say.
Oh, yeah, we need to call, uh, yeah, we need to call.
Well, we had that email in, from Jim.
James Hamlin.
Saying that they were.
But I think, I think we need to call Rand, Randy, don't we need to call Randy?
I think you need to call Randy.
I think you need to call Randy.
Okay. Um, now the.
CEO, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The only email that I did get was just, I mean, I, well, I can go print it out, 'cause it just talked about that, I mean, I don't really understand, because it's like, well, they're gonna look at the vendors and prepare the bid packet and stuff, but, I don't know, but they were the ones that wanted it by today.
That's what he said, so that's why you need to call and say, we're to that point, we had our special meeting today, and we, we didn't receive the bid.
Yeah.
Packet, we just need the information that, we realize it's gonna go, they put advertising in our newspaper.
Right.
And they do all that, that's part of their deal, is they do the advertising, but we have to run it through our meeting.
Right.
So we need the form to sign that says we're going out for bids.
Or that we're noticing, yeah, just like a regular notice to bid, yeah.
Right.
But they're the ones supposed to be prepared.
Pre, pre, prepare the document, thank you.
This is Randy.
Hi, Randy, it's Cindy Pratt, and we're, I'm in the, uh, Board of County Commissioners meeting, so I'll let them talk.
Hey, uh, Randy, we had, we called a special meeting today, because our understanding last week was, you wanted to get that bid sent out as soon as possible, and by the, uh, by the title, upon the title statutes, that has to come through our board for us to sign the document that says to go out for bid, and we understood you were preparing that document for our signatures, and Cindy hadn't received it, do you have that ready for us?
Let me, uh, let, let me call Jim at the office.
Okay.
And I'll have him call you right back.
Okay, have him call, uh, 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 oh, five eight oh, three nine five, okay, just our. Do you want us to call Jim?
I'm standing at a construction site.
Oh, hey, Randy, we can call Jim.
Okay, why don't you call Jim, he's at the office.
We'll do that, that'd be easier, okay, alright, thank you.
Alright, I appreciate it.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Yeah, how about this, look at this, James says.
Oh, I got one under here too.
Do you?
Where's mine?
I don't know.
Did you not, you begged one? I begged mine off at my office, mine's a Kirby's, so is yours.
Yep.
I'll hit him up. I'll hit him up for you. No, I actually.
Hello?
Jim?
Yes?
Hi, it's Cindy Pratt, and I'm at the county, uh, the Board of County Commissioners meeting, so I'm gonna let Cindy talk.
Hey, Jim, we're in our board meeting, we called this special meeting today to do the bid for the, our project, you wanted us to call special meeting, so we could sign the documents, but Cindy hadn't received the documents to go out for bid, so.
Oh, they'll be coming out today, we've got them done, they'll probably come out around noon today.
You've got what done, the, the document you need to sign?
The document, is that what you're asking for?
Yes, we need to, we, according to the Oklahoma statute, that has to come through our board meeting, and we have to sign the, the deal that says we're going out for bid, so, that's why we're, did you not prepare a bid signature page for us?
Uh, I think that, uh, Kyler would have done that, not us.
We talked to Randy. Kyler would have done, Kyler's the one?
Yeah, 'cause they, they're the ones that actually go out for bid, not, not the architect.
Okay, you're, okay, so we should call Randy, or should we call Ryan, I would say Ryan.
Ryan.
Ryan, we will call Ryan, thank you, we appreciate that, that's alright, that's fine, thank you very much.
Alright, I'm sorry.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Ryan.
Ri, I'm glad you have us all right there.
You have heard tons of charm.
Yeah.
'Cause if you can just email, I can go print it out.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Hi, is Ryan, what's his name?
McIntosh.
McIntosh available, this is Cindy Pratt at the Grant County Clerk's Office.
Hold on just a moment.
Thank you.
So the second number must be his cell phone, I dialed the first number.
Oh.
So that must be the main number.
I suppose if he doesn't have a paper with, we gotta have some type of a spec to put on there.
Yeah.
I mean, it can't be.
Just a notice, a blank notice to bid.
Because they don't know what they're bidding, I mean, you can put, you know, we're obviously gonna say for more information through our website, but,
Right.
if they're listed at noon, we have to have that, so we can put it on our website.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
Yeah, I would think so. And like you said, that was whole point of why we.
Had this meeting.
Yeah. That guy's saying, oh crap, I didn't do that, he's sweating bullets right now, I think he's sweating bullets right now.
Hello, Cindy?
Hi, um, you're on speakerphone, and I'm in the County Commissioners Board Meeting, I'll let Cindy Bobbitt speak.
Okay.
Hey, Ryan, well, after our meeting, in our meeting last week, um, you, we're having the special board meeting today, so that we can sign to the bid papers to go out for bid, 'cause I understand you wanted to go out for bids today, but like we told you last week, we have to have that, you know, a general spec with the bids that, like, you're gonna put advertising in the newspaper that says, you know, what you're bidding, just some very, very brief details within to link it to our website, but you were gonna prepare that document for us to sign, do you have that ready for us?
We were under the understanding that you guys were just proceeding, like, giving approval to proceed with, with our plan, we weren't putting out to bid, we weren't advertising today.
What are you doing?
Um, we're waiting for revised drawings at this point.
Okay.
Over what was discussed last week.
Okay. We thought those revised drawings were gonna happen this week, and you was really wanting to go out today, that, that's fine, but, um, you can't, you know, we have, it has to, just so we're clear, we will table this and put it on, will you be ready next week to go out for bids?
Um, I will check with Ambler and see where, 'cause we really need those completed drawings before we go out to bid.
Okay.
Before we advertise.
Okay, alright, well, and we, we need some clarifications on the sheriff's windows and those doors anyway, so, that'll work, okay.
I bet it's not happening.
Right, that's what, that's what we understood, there was a few things that they needed to hammer out on the design before we could, we could actually advertise this. Cindy, did you happen to get that email from Paul clarifying, uh, how we run that advertisement? That we, we didn't want anything advertised yet until we had.
Which we haven't advertised anything.
'Cause you do, 'cause someone else, someone else does the advertising, I think you do the advertising for us.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we actually do that advertising.
Right, so, so, no, we won't be advertising anything of our show, but we need a copy of all the, you know, your whole bid packet.
Yeah, yeah.
We, we will scan that and put that on our website.
Gotcha, um, yeah, once we get those completed drawings, um, that, that's what we base all of our bid packages on, so.
Okay. Oh.
We need, we need that final design first, um, as far as last week's meeting, we understood that you guys were just, in the direction that we were going, you guys were good with it, that's, that's what you guys were approving today.
Not, well, nah, I guess we misunderstood that.
Yeah, we misunderstood.
We misunderstood that, we thought you were going out for bids today, and that's, you were gonna, that, that we discussed the timeline, and, and, uh, Jim said, yeah, they could have everything done this week, by Thursday, and then we would go out today, that was the timeline, but that's fine, um, we don't wanna wait too long, we're, we're getting into that season that we can start doing work, so.
Of course.
We certainly, uh, I don't know who we need to, to talk to to move this forward, but we will call Jim and Randy to make sure that they understand that we really want this to be on our agenda next week for final, to move forward.
Okay.
Okay.
Alrighty.
I, and you will, if you would please con, be in contact with Cindy Pratt, and I need that document for our meet, we need the actual document to sign, and Cindy can send you an example of what we usually have for our bids, it does, you know, give you an example of how we are formatted.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. Okay.
And I'm not seeing anything from Paul, I'm looking in my inbox, and I went back, oh, wait, 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 hold on just a second.
I believe it was.
Yeah, he did send something, just, let's see. Clarifier rolling, we have. Okay, I'll, I'll pass this along to them.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye.
Well, it says we will need a few days to clarify the bid packet, it doesn't say anything about, it said, after we receive the complete bid documents from Amber, we'll need a few days to develop the bid packet, but they were supposed to do all that last week.
Yeah, they said they'd have it done by Thursday, so that we, 'cause I said we had to post by Thursday at nine, and they said yes. So, I guess, what I need you to do, Cindy, so the board needs you to do is to get ahold of Jim again, and Randy, and tell them that the holdup is with them.
Mhm. Okay.
That we would like to make sure that this moves forward for the, for, to be bid next week, and that, uh, also that Jim needs to get ahold of Scott on those windows, that we want the option of two of those windows opening, and option if we can find some brick that they're gonna use that for, the food. I, I still think maybe the, the, for the future use, it might become evident, I still think it might not be a bad idea to put the cement blocks in there.
No, it'd be fine.
You know, and, and he wants a doorway, a walk-through doorway, and I don't know if there is a five foot, even at Enquire.
It would make it, the building look better, if you could match it.
Yeah, if you can, he, they said they were gonna come up with some options, but, yeah, so.
Yeah.
Alrighty, so, um, we can either no action or table what, what's your desire on the bid, I guess.
No action.
No action, no action, uh, try to push that forward, but.
Yeah, I'll work on it today.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll get calling and all that today, so.
No action, shale contract, District Two, Mabel Smothers, we have it approved by the district attorney, it is amended, uh, that all the payments will go to, um, Mrs. Mabel Smothers. Um, so I would make a motion to approve the, uh, lease.
Second.
Bobbitt Moon has second, or, excuse me, Ronc seconded to approve the amended shale contract for Mabel Smothers, all in favor?
Bobbitt?
Aye.
Ronc?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All rise, motion carried unanimously. Okay, I don't think it's gonna be a problem, but generally we send them to them first for signatures.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, yeah, yeah.
But since we've got them, we'll just go ahead and sign.
I just, and I just did three copies, so I'd have a copy, but yes, I, thank you for that reminder.
Make sure she signs one and returns it back.
I just got ahead of myself when you handed them to me this morning.
Yeah, I was like, yes, alright, we got them, right. Okay, um.
Are you gonna be two for two?
No, I don't know, that's Max's bill. That's a Max question. I remember that, I just got both of those this morning.
So table them both?
I, yeah, no action, I can do no action on those. Um, item J, easement agreement between Grant County and Paul Smith, District One.
Okay, you know, last week we had it, Paul Smith listed, and we changed that to Paul Smith, I appreciate that, thank you.
Yes, and I. Thank you, sorry about that.
That's okay, but I'd also requested that not be put back on.
Oh, I apologize, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
She's just used to having it there.
I am still checking, and I'm still waiting on.
I'll wait till you, you told me that, and I apologize, I just forgot, so I won't put it back on till you tell me.
Yes. That's right. Thank you.
Okay, I'll put a note here, don't put back on until Max tells me.
So, no action, uh, road crossing permit, no action, I have two that I received this morning, and I need to go look at those, so no action on those. Commissioners comments, Mr. Max, what do you have today?
You know, it, it's really dry, we, we've started pulling up some roads and stuff, but the, the subsoil moisture's not there, and it's, it's terrible. It's, it's dry, the dirt won't pat down, it blows off, uh, people complain, it's a wonderful time to be doing that, because you wanna get it pulled up and leveled out a little bit and stuff, but that's just a battle, we're hauling some shale, we're hauling some, uh, rock. Uh, Pat's guys have cleaned up over there, and we've got the last, what, twenty, thirty loads pushed up over there, and that'll be completed. We're working on that, uh, we are in the shale pit digging more shale, uh, we're getting ready to start on some bridges, Rick Deets was supposed to be over at Sand Creek repairing the piling in that, uh, bridge right to a quarter of a mile east to Steve Clover's house, be a mile and a quarter off of one thirty-two highway, but it's, uh, the water's come up in.
Oh, you have spring or something?
In the, in the creek now, and so now we're gonna have to pump the water out, uh, to repair the piling, which is what, why Rick Deets is not over here right now. He, uh, is working on a bridge out, uh, in Simron County, and had the same issue out there. They dosed some, uh, material up to.
Hit a spring.
And hit a spring, and they, they, it was three and a half foot deep the first day, and it was over seven feet the next day, so. Anyway, we're going to start building some, uh, bridge structures there in Deshaw. And that's just about all I have.
Okay, what we got?
Oh, let's see, we're just pulling ditches too, and having some luck, and some, not some great luck on that. We're getting a lot of equipment that we've surplus and getting ready to sell, we're kinda getting it ready for, to go to auction. Uh, like Max said, we're about done with the end of the rock over New Kirk, that'll be nice to have that done. I have a CDSA meeting tomorrow, a special meeting tomorrow morning, and then I have a meeting at the City of Eden, it's, uh, it has to do with Vance Air Force Base, and.
I'm one of that too.
They're, they're interviewing me for something.
Oh, mine's next to me.
I don't know, it's, it's, 'cause part of their deal in Al Fafa County borders.
It's the joint, uh, land survey, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, so, anyway, I gotta be there at one thirty on Wednesday, and that's about all I got.
On Wednesday, I do, on my comment, I will be at the statewide, uh.
CED meeting.
CED meeting, yeah.
Okay.
ODOT ran some tests on my surf project, Max, I think they ran some tests on yours too, so they.
Yes, they did. I haven't heard anything back yet.
I haven't either, they said they gotta evaluate them, it was, uh, where we're having some failures on the edges of our blacktop, and they're trying to, uh, look at, uh, do, do, they thumped them, and got some vibrations back, trying to figure out where the failures and what was going on there.
And that was the ODOT asphalt division that did that?
Yeah, the ODOT asphalt division, so, uh, kinda excited to see where we are, and where we will be on that, and what it will tell us, so, um, we're also pulling up ditches, and we're actually trying to run a packer on ours, some of ours is pretty tough. Um, we're also pulling up ditches and we're actually trying to run a packer on ours, some of ours is pretty tough, but till we get some rain, rain will be.
We've been running packers on ours too, we need a mortar truck.
It just doesn't, yeah, it, yeah, we, well, ours was just so big at chunks that we tried to at least make it where our vehicle to, you know.
Yeah, chunks don't blow them.
Kinda, you know, they kinda, kinda walk over it, so, but anyway, we've got that going on. Um, tomorrow, we're gonna have our, our safety meeting, I think, Cindy Sue, did you say something about having W fours ready for us, maybe to fill out again or something?
Um, Alex said they don't have the new ones out yet, they're not gonna have them out till February, and I looked online and they're not out there yet, so.
Yeah, okay. Alright, alright, so if not, we'll see, till we get them.
We'll have to redo that.
Well, it, it, you, you need to rev- you're supposed to review them every year and then notify, say.
Right.
No change and just sign a new one that says no change, or if you wanna change, then fill it out, but.
Yeah.
Technically and legally, she needs a new one every year in her file to show.
I don't know how Alex knew that they'd be ready in February, I don't know if she called or whatever, but I did try to find them online and there was just the two thousand seventeenth was the only one out there, so.
Um, in Wednesday, I will be going down to, uh, the, the CED meeting and the ACCO board meeting, and then at two o'clock, we have our ACCO legislative meeting, uh. We'll be reviewing some, all the bills, I think there's almost two thousand bills out there, but, uh, there's about two hundred that affect counties, but. In particular, I think there's about twelve fifteen will be deciding whether to support or oppose. And then also on Wednesday, they have another wind catcher meeting in downtown Enid, I, I don't know if they'll make that. I leave Thursday for Washington DC for my women in government meeting, so I will be gone till s- the rest of the week. But I will be here Monday, back on Monday for our board meeting, so. Uh, a lot of things going on, on the transportation on the national level as well, uh, for me, anywhere from talking about gas tax to the three Ps of private, uh, public partnerships. Um, supposedly Trump in his State of the Union address will, you know, if you remember, that's one of his, was he was talking one trillion dollars. A, a document was leaked and a, and Trump is considering it a leaked, not a false news document. So there must be something, but it cannot be the most current, but it's showing as much as maybe one point seven trillion invested. And part of that may be coming through the USDA, the government for some rural counties, um, some different things going on there. The tiger grants are probably out, but there are, a lot of it is going to be grants, but they're gonna be eighty percent. Your funds and twenty percent their funds, so it's gonna be pretty tough for some, like Grant County to qualify for some of those grants. Cause eighty percent of the project is tough and we don't have the option to have any, uh, private partnerships, so. It's not like we can come in here and build a toll road or toll bridges or, you know, I could just see that working, so. Alrighty, with that, we are down to number nine.
I make a motion to adjourn. I'll second.
Let's move Ron seconded to adjourn at nine fifty-five AM, thank you very much.
Bobbitt.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Hess.
All in motion, wait a minute, did I hear Hess?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Did you say?
Oh, yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And did, uh, Brandon get you the information so you can start to talk with?
Yes, I, I, I have it scribbled down, I'm gonna type it up, so I'll have, yes, we went over it.
Okay.
And he's working on getting me a mouse, it should be by next week, I should.